A big, big slip or error. I failed to introduce my co-host, or our co-host, Dr. Laura Presley, who is always kind to assist us at the last minute of a call. And if I'll hand it over to you so you can ask Ms. Mary Lee to introduce herself.
So, yes, we have other candidate in the at-large place eight. Ms. Lee, why don't you introduce yourself?
My name is Mary Ellen Petruszynski. And I am also an attorney, although I don't practice. I was educated at Lehigh University, Delaware Law School, Widener University, many years ago now. Most importantly, I've been a mom of two children who have gone through AISD and been the recipients of fabulous academic programming, musical opportunities, athletic opportunities, art opportunities. And I am extremely grateful for what my family has received from AISD. I've always had a passion for education and education policy. I recently, well, not so recently, for the past eight years, have been running an organization here in Austin that funds educational opportunity for the underserved. Through that work, I've seen another side of AISD. So I've had an opportunity to be in just about every school within the district, and I've learned a lot. My reasons for running are just that. As a mom, I have one perspective. It's full of gratitude. I gained a wealth of experience navigating this large district for two very different children. And then, in the last eight years, I've seen a completely different set of issues and have had the opportunity to help bring additional funding to those issues, both from the foundation that I run, collaborative efforts with other foundations, other alternative sources of revenue for the district. I would say that my priorities in running for this position are several. One is to leverage the experience, the diverse experience that I'm talking about, what I've learned in working on the budget and advisory committee for the district. I've learned immense amounts of information about a $1 billion budget. I have many innovative ideas about how to hone that budget, innovative ideas about alternative sources of funding other than taxes. I also think that teachers are our number-one resource in the district. They bring out the best in our children. And so, as a former teacher, I also taught school. I'm old. I've done a lot of things. I have incredible admiration for those teachers. And I think we owe them the strongest resources we can bring them. At the same time, we need to hold them accountable and look for innovative ways around high-stakes testing so that we're not putting all the onus on one way of being accountable. So the other thing that I am also interested in is the communication policies and procedures of the district and honing them, and I have many ideas on how to do that, to further engage parents and guardians, significant stakeholders, to come and make our public schools stronger. And I guess the last of my highest priorities would be diverse programming across the district. I will not be part of the divide, ever. I will be part of collaboration and spreading of resources.
Okay, well, what we're gonna do is, thank you, Mary. What we'll do is, I'll ask a couple of questions, and then Dr. Presley will ask a couple of questions. And these are pretty much in general, because you are running in an at-large position, you know, the issue. What is your opinion about the district, and I'll use the word farming out, to charter schools, the duties that a district has under a public, as a public institution? But farming out those duties and responsibilities to charter schools, and specifically IDEA. And the reason I ask that, because if it's successful, will this be setting a trend? And will this kind of practice be in West Austin? So what's your opinion about that particular practice?
Right. Well, it's a concern that I hear at every forum that I go to, I've been to, literally, on this campaign, in this campaign. And I go to something every night. So the concern I hear that you are expressing is one that many Austinites feel. Let me start with IDEA. I'm gonna say that I'm not against all charter schools because they're all different, right? There's all various types of charter schools, and IDEA is just one example. IDEA could have been the best idea since sliced bread, but I don't think that we know enough about, or we did at the time, what IDEA had to offer to the district. And in fact, we heard after the fact, many, we heard some school board members say, "Well, I didn't know about this, and I didn't know about that." Unanswered questions about a very big decision our district made to hand over control of a school to a private charter. Parents and community members had even more questions, of course. So I thought that the process for bringing in that charter was flawed. And actually, I've spoken to many supporters of, who were, people who were supportive of bringing in IDEA to Allen, who will agree at this point that the process moved too fast. And it was not as inclusive of community concerns and addressing questions like it should have been. And so I'm glad to hear that. I'm glad to see that. I think as a community, as a district, we've learned a lesson. I will recognize that there is an urgency to improving our schools. And I understand that was the interest of the school board members and the superintendent for bringing it in. I respect that, and I don't think anybody has any bad motives or will in bringing in IDEA. But we can't do it if we don't bring the community along. Because what has happened with IDEA is that many, many parents whose kids are zoned to, would be otherwise zoned to IDEA or are zoned to IDEA, have opted out. And so they voted with their feet, right? They've decided, "We're gonna go to neighboring schools." And as a result, IDEA's gonna operate more like a charter. And it's really gonna be hard to know whether they're doing a better job than a school that is taking those kids within the neighborhood and just educating those kids. Because that's the difference with most charters. And really, I can't think of a charter in Texas that is any different, where it's a magnet school. So like the Ann Richards School's a magnet school. And it's bringing in the kids whose parents have the time and energy to find the best option for their child. Now, not every child is blessed with parents who are able to do that. So IDEA and many other charters are going to be taking those families from our public schools. And so you can't really compare them to a public school that takes all the kids in a neighborhood and educates all those kids because that's the duty of the public schools.
Okay. I do wanna mention, because I was part of the debate on IDEA, or the selection of a charter school to perform the issues at Allen. But I do wanna mention, in fairness to IDEA, that KIP, there was three or four other charter schools that applied for this contract. And IDEA is the one that won the contract. But there were other charters that applied. And today, it was announced that we have a new Texas Education Commissioner, Mr. Williams. He was the chairman of the Row Row Commission. Your folks are poking.
My people.
Yes. So, but I just wanted to mention that. Mary Ellen, what's your position on?
So, I would agree that I am also a fan of high-performing options for children, right? I, too, was not at the board table when the decision was made. I don't know what information they had in front of them. But I do know that schools started today, and there's a school full of children there. And next year, there'll be different children. This year, it's those children. And it is urgent that it succeeds for those children. And so, now that that is the plan, I would do everything in my power to make sure that all schools in AISD succeed. And by the way, AISD is an in-district charter. It's not a private charter. It's an in-district charter.
Great idea.
So it's part of our public school system. So for those children, it needs to succeed. Every kid counts. That would be pretty much my basic view. So I'm in favor of high-quality options. Now, Gina brings up a very important point, that our processes within AISD need to be such that we are gaining information from the community before decisions are made. And I watched the beginnings of some changes along those lines with our single-gender school conversation. But it's a process, you know? Even in that meeting, where people have asked for that, you know, we have to be careful that people that aren't being impacted by the decision aren't weighing in more heavily than the neighborhood folks that are being impacted. So our systems definitely need some fine-tuning and honing. But I think the IDEA issue definitely shone a light on that. And so.
So would it be safe to say that you support in-district charter schools?
No, I would support a high-performing option.
Which could be an in-district.
I mean, ideally, it's us doing the work from day one without any. But I will support accountability and high-performing options for all of our children. We need to find a way to get that to all our children.
Okay. You want to?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. And one is more tactical, and one is more strategic. So let me go to the tactical one first. My daughter also attended public school here in Austin. And she went to McCallum High School. And she was at Merkison Middle School. And went to DOS Elementary and also Zilker Elementary. So we moved, I was a graduate student, and we moved a lot, going from graduate school to, you know, having a real job and having a home. So what was really, really upsetting to me, I, education's very important to me. My childhood, when she was born, there was a stamp on her head that she will go to college, no question about it. There was no discussion. So as she was getting, taking high, very difficult classes in high school, science, you know, her chemistry, her advanced mathematics, her physics, I was appalled at the Austin Independent School District, where they would not, they did not have books for her to take home. She graduated 2003. And today, we're still in that boat. I think that is an atrocity. I cannot imagine a school district that cannot manage funds well enough so that students can take books home, your math, your science, your literature. And I don't wanna hear the argument that these things are online. Don't even go there, okay? Because you have over 50% of students in high school that can't get online because they don't have computer access. So what are you going to do tactically so that every student in AISD can take their books home? I'll let you answer first.
It's funny you would bring up that situation.
I'm very passionate about this. And I had to go purchase at half-price books for her.
I did the same for my daughter.
So half-price books. I bought two chemistry books, two physics books.
Exactly.
And, you know, so that she would have the information. Okay. It's unacceptable, period. So I wanna know what you're gonna do about it.
Well, I mean, that just comes, to me, comes back to priorities. So I've had that same experience. So if you think that's not gonna be a priority of mine, you're wrong. The exact same experience, when my daughter started at Covington Middle School, my husband and I went up there and realized that she didn't have a book to bring home.
Yeah.
And so I went to Bergeron Harris, who was the district for years and was the assistant principal at the time. "What's up with this?" And so he said, "Well, we can get you the book list, and you can buy a set of books for your daughter," which I did, which I did. But not all parents can do that. And that's a big part of the concern that I have. So when I talk about the budget intricacies and the priorities, that is very much a priority of mine, that every child have the tools they need to succeed. And certainly, the course book, for your course, is a tool that you need.
That's right.
So.
But what, give me some actions that you can take. I want solutions. I know that you recognize it's a problem. But what are the solutions?
You work with the top-budget people at the district. I mean, it's a budget issue, right? And they've made a priority that doesn't agree with most parents. So that's a situation where, you know, you take that input, and that priority gets changed. You know, it may look like a simple way to solve the problem, you know? "Oh, we can have a class set." Remember that term? But it's not. It is not conducive to learning. And I use the example that a child that, what we're trying to create in AISD is a lifelong learner. A lifelong learner generally likes to read. And generally, will take the book for the course that they're interested in, and not just read the coursework for that night, but go to the chapter on rocks, or, you know, that's really interesting to him or her, and read that on their own. And actually do some incredible learning on their own. So the same tack that I took with Covington, you know, you're in a different position as a single parent, as one parent in AISD. As a board member, that would be a priority of mine. And those discussions come up. I mean, the authority of the board is when you're setting the budget. And so that would be a priority.
Okay. Okay. Well, so I've not had kids that have gone through high school yet. So this is the first I've heard of that. And part of my campaign experience is just listening to people and hearing these problems. Because I think that is how we figure out how we tackle educating our children, is by listening to parents and their experiences. But what occurs to me is that I have heard theories about how books aren't as important anymore, and that we can do everything with worksheets and on a computer screen. And books are somewhat obsolete, which I do not believe. I think that, just as Mary Ellen referenced, we wanna create lifelong learners. And we don't get there by using worksheets to teach to a test. We need substance. We need to offer our child substance. And so I do believe that books are important. I do believe that our kids spend way too much time in front of screens already. And so not only is it a problem that not everybody has access to computers, it's a problem that we're in front of screens too often. And that leads to all sorts of other problems. So it would be a priority for me as well to make sure that kids have books and that, and the tools they need to really learn and enjoy learning. And so, like Mary Ellen said, it would be a function of budget. But it would also be a function of what are the priorities of the board member? What are board members, what are the policies that are important to board members? And so as a board member, that would be a policy priority for me.
Well, to me, it seems, this is the first time I've heard that books are not available.
And it's still today.
And you know what? To me, that's like.
Ten years later.
Like a carpenter going to work without a hammer.
No, a tool belt.
Or a tool.
Yes.
So no wonder we have academic issues within AISD and meeting certain bars.
And you think the kids are gonna tell their parents, "I don't have a book to take home."
No.
They're not gonna tell them.
And it can never be a function of means, right? So if a parent can go and buy the set, you know, that's even more of a travesty.
It is, it is. That's an indication that something needs to change.
And then enters the issue of equity in education.
That's it. You're missing a little example.
But if you have another question, I'll ask.
I do. So if I was through with this, I spent 17 years in the semiconductor industry here in Austin as a manager and a technologist. I have patents and papers. And so education is the most important thing to me. I was, I grew up in a family, a rural town in North Texas. And my family was completely uneducated. My father didn't even graduate high school. He was thrown into work. He was a cattle auctioneer at the stockyards. He was a very smart man, had three businesses going at one time. So I learned early on how important education is. I didn't wanna work as hard as he did. So, you know, in the semiconductor industry, I was an engineer and different manager. My last job, now in my own business, my last job was I was the gross margin manager for a networking business. And so I was involved in cutting costs, looking at budgets, and prioritizing, and making sure efficiencies were there. And so I'd like you both to give me, what process would you support? And would you push for, for improvements in efficiencies? And so that you can find money in the budget for books, okay? What process would you push for as a school board? Would you answer? To find the money and to improve efficiencies in the district?
Well, we have an auditor, a financial auditor, or a financial audit that's done in the district. And I think we could probably engage that process better. We could probably ask more questions. That is not my expertise, but I, we have access to experts in that area who can help us figure those things out. I think that there are, that there are, that there's money out there that we are not taking advantage of. For instance, I don't know if you know this, but there is a foundation for the school district, which I only learned once I started running for office, which is disappointing because it's such an opportunity. We have some real heavy hitters on that foundation board. Kevin Cole is the president of it. Elizabeth Christian is on that board, former mayor's wife. People who have access to industries and other people who care and would make that kind of investment in our schools. But it's definitely underutilized, and many people don't even know about it. So I think we need to make sure that we're using these other methods of getting money for our children so that we can provide them the education that they deserve. And, you know, I think we need to ask a lot of questions. A former school board member told me, you know, "We get these reports, this big, once a week, from staff about everything we need for the meeting. And the bigger the reports, the farther away you are from the truth."
I bet it.
So I think it's important that we, that we ask a lot of questions to find out. Somebody has proposed to me, and I'm interested in exploring the idea of having an in-house auditor so that school board members could ask the in-house auditor, "You know, I'm concerned about this area and spending, or performance, or what have you, that we need more information about." And a good auditor will pay for itself. So if we had an auditor to review, to review certain issues that are of concern to the board members, we should be able to find more savings. So that's something that I'm not wholeheartedly endorsing right now. I'm very intrigued and interested, and I'm going to learn more about. Because I share your concern.
Well, so like you, I have not quite the depth of experience you have. But I've been running an organization, managing a budget, leveraging dollars, and looking for alternative sources of revenue for educational programs for the last eight years. I'm on the Alternative Sources of Revenue Subcommittee for the school district. I am familiar with the Austin Public Education Fund. It is grossly underutilized. Everyone knows of the Eames Public Education Fund. And some Austinites give to the Eames Public Education Fund. But they don't know about the Austin Public Education Fund, which is another travesty. We also, in the last 10 years or so, have a diverse group of, many of them high-tech professionals who have started education foundations. And it's been a slow process. Shirley Heitzman, who was with the district most recently, has been, had been assigned to this project of getting more dollars from alternative resources, including high-tech, brought into the district. I think that's one approach, the alternative resources. And the other is through, you know, the current auditing process that we have, some really sharp professionals that we have working in the accounting/ CFO kind of area for the district. As well as, when we talk about developing processes, remembering that our teachers and our principals are important resources. So a process by which we are getting information on a regular basis from teachers, principals, parents, on just this kind of anecdotal information. We don't have that in place right now. Those would be my.
I do wanna mention, go ahead.
Can I follow up with one thing?
Sure.
So there is a, you know, the semiconductor industry in the United States has had to compete with Asia. And we've had to be very proficient at cost savings. There are what I would call best-known methods, processes for cost reduction and finding waste. And you touched on it. What we do in the industry is, we will get what you call your first-level employees, teachers, principals. You get 'em together in groups, and you say, "Where's the waste?" You are on the first level. You know where the waste is. And you're not in the administration, so you're not politically astute enough, you know, typically, to try to protect where the waste is. So I would propose that the district look into lean business practices. It's a concept that's used in automotive industry. I don't know if you've heard of it, if you ever heard of lean.
My husband's in the semiconductor industry.
Okay, so he would know. So, oh, yeah. So it's a concept, and it's a process, where you get together first-level people, and you say, you ask them, "Where is the waste?" And you get this kind of cursory, first-level, you know, kind of programs that can be cut. But as you go the next quarter, or the next six months, you ask them again. And they're now in the process of thinking of cost-cutting, savings. And it's a process. It's a process for people to change how they think and to constantly imagine, "What could we do?" I'll give you an example. I've been to the Austin Energy Utility Commission. All of their copies, this thick, color, best-grade paper you could imagine. Why? Why isn't it black and white on cheap paper, okay? That is a culture of spending, all right? So once you develop these questions, and you get into that process. So I really want to emphasize how important that process is. It's a process. It's not, it's something that you develop over time. So I just wanna give that.
And our teachers know how to pinch pennies, right?
They do.
And they can tell you where the administration is wasting money, and you need their information. You need their input.
That's right.
And they're not biased.
And one.
They're not political.
And one, one thing that's interesting about our accountability system, and I think it goes along those same lines, is that we have, it's like military style, right? It's like teachers are accountable to the principal, who's accountable to the superintendent, who's accountable to the board. But there's not a lot of accountability that flows back down. And so teachers, teachers see, witness these things. And teachers are on the front line. And so teachers, teachers see, witness these things, and teachers are on the front lines and have good ideas about what needs to be done. And so I think it's important that we rethink our accountability system to make sure that accountability flows back down as well. And I think if we had something like that, we could better assess waste and cost savings as well.
Yeah, you have a comment on that?
I think that's the same thing we were saying, so.
Yeah, it is.
Well, having been a bureaucrat myself for many years, I got hung on to the zero-budget process. Process is zero-budget every year, and we start from scratch. It may not be the most efficient, but those are some of the practices that.
Yeah, you go through the process.
Right, absolutely, absolutely. I did wanna mention one thing, that this position pays a very, very huge amount of dollars of zero, okay? So I do wanna commend both of y'all for taking, you know, the opportunity to run for a position that pays and consumes a lot of time, a lot of time. And I wanna say that because as a chief of staff for an elected official who did have staff, you know, I can, it brings back the nightmares of the stacks and stacks of papers. Every Monday at, when I would go to the commissioners, to the office, I'd have a stack this high. And then the elected official, Commissioner Delano, would, for briefing before Commissioners Court, he would just say, "Just give me the bottom line."
It's all he wants, yeah.
It's all I wanna know.
Condensed day on this.
Yes or no? But there is a lot of information that flows in and out through A I S D. And to speak about the enormous growth that A I S D has experienced. I mean, you're talking about the extremes Bowie, and the other extremes Eastside Memorial, you know? And this is an at-large position. So my question that I have for y'all is, what type of challenges do you see in running an at-large position in the school district?
Well, the number-one challenge unfortunately is money, because there are a lot of people to reach. And though I'm trying, I don't think I'm gonna be able to reach everyone by the time November comes around. So it takes money to reach a lot of people, and that means that fewer, that the pool of people who can raise that money, it gets smaller. So that's a challenge of running for an at-large position, and especially in November, since this is the first time it's gonna be a November election. You know, that being said, one of the good things and nice things about it is that you're able to kinda step back and take a big, the larger view, take in the big picture of education policy for our city. And so whereas district representatives represent their, the interests of their constituents who vote for them, it is nice to have some people on the board, I think, who are gonna take into account all of it and figure out as a, as a school district, as a city, how do we wanna move forward to educate all of Austin's children? So, you know, there are challenges, and there are plus, plus there's opportunities. I would like to see us review, as a school district, as a community really, ways that we might limit the amount of money that it takes to run. Maybe if we can look at some voluntary restrictions on raising or spending. I know that with Citizens United, that all gets more difficult to do, but I think it would be worthwhile to look into that, because I think it is a concern. And, you know, we don't have enough money to educate our own children, but yet educating children is a big business, and there are interests who are willing to spend a lot of money to get at some of our public dollars so that they can, so that they can make a profit off of them. And unfortunately, that's gonna be more and more of a problem, and something that we as citizens and community members need to try to figure out how we protect our public schools from that.
Let me ask the question, just to make sure. Were you concerned, was your question about the campaigning for the at-large position? Or the concerns of being an at-large candidate, or both? Because to me, they're two really separate questions.
Well, yeah, running an at-large position, the challenges.
Right, the running. I would say, you know, the at-large position was the most attractive to me because my experience base that I alluded to in the bio, in the intro, I'm so passionate about the inequity that we have in the district. And you don't really see that in any one small microcosm. You really have to look across the district to see, as you say, Bowie next to Eastside Memorial, just for an example, right? Those are the issues I wanna think on. Those are the issues I think on every day in the work that I do. So there really was no other position on the board that was of interest to me. Yeah, as far as Gina's comment about the campaign dollars, it pains me to see money at all spent on a campaign when I know the use I can put it to in the education system, because that's what I do with money every day. That's what I wanna do with it, you know, this, you know. I liked, I brought my cards, you saw they were made on the copy machine, because I don't wanna spend, I wanna get the word out, but in the least expensive way there is to do it.
I know that the city, I don't know about A I S D, but I know that, okay, we'll have a question from our host. As a matter of fact, last Monday, we had, we didn't have our host here because he was, I'll kid it around and say, he was on special assignment. The trailer park is, you know, going up there, and so he was out there in a special.
Out of state.
Out of state. Go ahead.
You have a question from the I S D?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I was gallivanting around anyway. Did I miss y'all's bio at the beginning about, how much time did y'all actually spend in the classroom?
Well, I was a teacher, so, and then I went to school. Does that count?
Yeah, because I know there's a lot of administrators out there who have never actually been in the classroom.
I've never actually been an administrator, but I've been a teacher.
Well, that wasn't my question. My question was, of course, my party has a platform for the state, and the plank in it is, "The dollars follow the kids." Which I was gonna ask about why y'all think people are opting out of the public school for charter schools, which is a public school, and what y'all think about the voucher system? Our vouchers, period. And that was my question from, yeah, I was out in Colorado, 6,500 feet, took me a while to acclimate. I had that rubber hose shoved so far up my nose, now I'm back, I'm still racing. But anyway, I know they could do great on it, but I had to ask that question.
It's a good question.
Yeah.
So I'll just go sit back down and listen to you.
I think we have to pay very close attention to that. I mean, it's gone on for decades, right? You have, the charter system is just one way that people opt out of public school. People opt out of public school and go to private school. People vote with their feet all the time. And we're putting our head in the sand at any time if we're not paying attention to why they're doing that. And if they're doing it because we're not performing in a school, we've gotta address it. But that.
What about the voucher system? Can you go on record on that?
I, you know, I haven't given the voucher system much thought since my own children were in school, and I was not a fan in the sense that I didn't like to see dollars leaving, leaving the public system in any way. I just, I think, you know, in a real competitive market, but we're not there yet. You know, there's so many inequities across the different, you know, private schools and their funding and how, that it just brings too much into question and is a possible drain.
So I agree that people are voting with their feet because they're not getting what they want from their public schools. I think what we need to realize is that the only way we're gonna figure out what people want from their public schools is by asking them. And that isn't done too frequently. And, you know, we don't find out by having forums where people get to click the answer yes or no to a question. We find out by really sitting down and having conversations with people about, what are the challenges? What do you want, what are your hopes and dreams for your child? And specifics. What can we do to make this a better experience for you and your child, for your family? I have visited so many schools where I have heard repeatedly that parents are frustrated because buses aren't picking up their kids to bring them to school, that the bus route misses their kids because they're too close to their schools, because it's not within the policy of A I S D to pick up their school, their kids at their apartment complex and bring them to school. I think it's that kind of culture of just being rigid, it's the red tape, right? Being rigid to what it is that parents and families want and not being responsive that sends unfortunately many families out of the public schools.
So what position do you have on the vouchers?
Oh, and vouchers, vouchers I think are dangerous because I think they're a drain on our public schools.
Okay, we have a Republican legislature coming to Austin in January.
Like it's different.
Well, the reason, the reason I'm mentioning that is because, like Mr. Williams, the new education commissioner, is a hundred percent supporter of vouchers. So that's something that we may be facing with this new, with this legislature that's coming in. Yet it's not November, it's not past November, so, you know, we may have a miracle there and we'll have more Democrats in there. But, yeah, the, the one thing that I, the next issue I wanna go into is because whichever one of you is elected, you will be taking a position or a vote on the single-sex school proposal that's out there by Ms. Bradley. And we had her here as a guest to speak about that. And, but one of the things that I noticed when I went to the town hall meeting, because at Slulak, we kinda responded to the telephone survey that was done in December, because this was the second meeting that they had on the issue. And a lot of the constituents within Pearson-Garcia that are Mexican-American or Hispanics or the new, were in support of the single-sex schools because for them, wearing a uniform is nothing foreign. It's something that's been done before. And they also, it also has a little kinda like cultural ingredient in there where they feel that, where, especially in the middle school age rank, what's that, eleven, twelve, and thirteen years old? That's when our kids start spreading their wings out a little bit. So it's very challenging. So what's your position on the single-sex school? And how would you, not necessarily vote on it, but what type of input or what satisfies you to support a single-sex school?
I think that President Mark Williams had a valid concern when he asked, "Why is this model better than others for educating our children?" And that's not something that I know the answer to, and I don't think that's something that has been expressed by the district. I think that we need to be creative and open to ideas that work, but I haven't seen the evidence that that is, that's the solution. It could be, it could very well be, but I don't know that we're there yet to make that decision. I wanna acknowledge Cheryl Bradley for recognizing, she, I know she's a big believer in it, and she senses an urgency that she is responding to, and I honor that. And I wanna acknowledge that, that just a couple of weeks ago, she understood that we weren't at that point yet, and so put that on hold. I think it's something definitely to explore, but I think before we make what seems to me at this point a leap into single-gender schools, I think we need to go back to the community again and sit down with parents and teachers and ask them, what is it that are the challenges for this school? Why is it that we're not performing the way that we should be performing in our schools? And then from there, craft a solution. And it may be the solution includes single-gender schools, but I'm not sure that we have had those conversations yet.
I would go back to my prior statement, which is, I am a fan of high-caliber options within this school district. There is research on single-gender schools, that some of them perform very well. I did not study enough of the data that came from Cheryl to know the nuances of this plan and whether this is one of them. So that's one issue, right? To make sure we have the highest caliber plan, and that's what we're rolling out. Secondly, I was, I was at the second meeting at LBJ High School, and I, you know, there were myriad of opinions expressed, and as you point out, not even everyone there expressing opinions were necessarily people that were gonna be impacted by the school. So I think that process needs to be honed further to make sure that it is what that community is looking for. And then if it is, our responsibility is to offer the highest quality of that model.
Can I, William? Personally, I think it's a huge distraction when your students don't have books. I'm serious.
We all agree.
I'm serious. My daughter was at Merkison Middle School in seventh grade, and when the summer rolled around, I was asking a lot of questions, and I said, "What books did you read this year in seventh grade?" And she said, "Mom, we didn't read any books." And I was floored. Merkison Middle School is a pretty good school. It's a, you know, this was back in two, you know, in the nineties, late nineties. So I'm sure there's improvement since, but she had not read one book that year in seventh grade. And that is absolutely unacceptable. So I think the single-gender thing is a distraction. I think that if you're not providing books to your students, that's a first principle. And if we're not doing that well, we're wasting resources and energy in some problem-solving on something that is not a high priority relative to making sure students have books so they can take them home and they can learn. And I am, you know, I'm adamant about this issue, and I think the gender thing is a distraction personally.
Okay, we go off at seven fifty-eight, correct?
Seven fifty-three.
Okay, let me make a little small commentary, and then we'll go to closing comments from both of y'all. And if you, do we have, do we have information if volunteers wanna contribute or call on?
Yeah, how do you get in contact with y'all, find out more about you, how can I help you, stuff like that?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. My observation in the town hall meeting that I went, attended at LBJ was one of where the parents, or the people from the community that were there that belonged, that lived in the area, to me, in my interpretation, they were more concerned of, "Why didn't you involve us at the beginning?" as opposed to now, because they were perceiving it as a, it's a done deal. And that goes back to one effort that we tried last year is to hold a Parents Empowerment Education Summit within A I S D. Because what the parents, what I read, the parents, what they were saying there at that town hall meeting, "We wanna get involved. We wanna, but we want to be able to participate in whatever curriculum is gonna be set up in whichever manner in our schools," because we're the, as the parents, we're the ones that are gonna be affected the most, because if we have to take the child from point A to point B or vice versa, we're the ones that. And like I told trustee Bradley and some of the meetings that we did have, that in order for this to be successful, or any program to be successful, the parents have to be the owners of the process. Because if you don't have the parents being owners of the process, man, you're fighting an uphill battle. Sad to say, that didn't happen at Allen, an idea. Regardless of the opposition, it was still done. So I'll just leave it at that. And then, Mary Ellen, if you'll go ahead and close, and again, educate the TV audience how they can get. again, educate the TV audience how they can get ahold of you and go from there.
Again, Mary Ellen Pechesinski, running for AISD School Board, place eight. I bring diverse experience as a mom of two children who have gone through this great district, as the executive director of an organization that has worked hard to create educational opportunity for the underserved. I've seen two sides of the district, many sides of the district, and I would like an opportunity to give back and serve in this way. If you are interested in learning more about me, I have a website, maryellenforAISD.com.
My name is Gina Inahosa, and I am running for place eight, the at-large position. I am running because I want to amplify the voices of parents and community members. Just like Gabino said, nobody cares more about educating our children than parents do, and I think those voices and concerns need to be heard and respected and incorporated, just like you said, from the very beginning, to figure out the very complicated issues that we have within our district. My background, I'm a licensed attorney. I have spent my professional career working on behalf of people in discrimination cases, low-wage workers, working with other advocates and lawyers to garner nutritional aid for low-income children. So I've spent my, my professional career working on behalf of others. But as a mother with a child in an AISD school, I have a personal stake in this, and it's important to me that we get it right for my children and for my neighbors' children and the children for the city of Austin. My website is ginainahosa.com, and there you can sign up to be a supporter, you can sign up to volunteer, or you can go there to just ask a question, and I ask for your vote in November. Thank you.
Is that it?
Yeah, we'll, we'll put that up on the website somewhere, and we do appreciate y'all coming on.
Thank you.
Because we try to focus on these down-down races.
What companies?
And we got much more coming up, no show next week, right? It's Labor Day. After that, we got, two weeks, we got the cop show coming up.
Yes.
Yeah, there's the sheriff and the chief.
Are you serious?
Yeah, at the same time, as well as Wayne Vincent. He's the president, Police Union President. And then we got Rick Brad.
They need to address the free speech thing of filming them.
See, our buddy got arrested again today, huh?
You want me on that one? I'll come on that one too, Poki, I'll tell you that.
Well, we might have a lot of your time, too. But anyway, we do appreciate y'all coming on.
And we want to remind you, if you have not registered to vote, October the 6th is the voter registration deadline to be able to vote in the presidential election in this particular race. Like Poki mentioned, we have a full ballot in November, so.
We sure do.
Bring, bring your information, because you're going to be in that booth for at least three, if not more, four or five minutes.
That's right. It's going to be a while.
Don't get discouraged.
But it's important that we go and voice our vote. Thank you.
Take care, everybody, for watching. I think these ladies are coming in talking with us, and we'll be back in two weeks. Later on, folks, bye-bye.